I salute the flag of the state of New Mexico and is the symbol of perfect friendship among united cultures. Mr. Roxanne.
My gracious, my father, thank you for giving us an ender day. Lord, I just ask that for coming here today to do county business, I lift up our commissioners to you and I ask that you give them this guidance and counsel to lead us through. In order to lift up our national leaders to you, we're in such a state, I lift our nation to you. Please give us say, Lord, that everyone that has sorrow and suffering right now, I lift them up and give them peace. I love you in Jesus's name. Amen.
Good morning, commissioners, those in the audience. Excuse Commissioner McCutcheon this morning, he's out of town. Vice Chairman Beard is providing at this meeting. So, are there any public comments from the audience? I didn't receive any written comments for this meeting. And I don't see any public comments in the audience. So, we'll move to item two, which is awesome, a donation presentation from Chevron to the Eddy County Emergency Management and Eddy County Fire and Rescue. We can have Ms. Beverly and Mr. Cock come up. Josh, if you want to come up. Vice Chairman Beard, if you want to, they have a check to give to those entities.
Oh, he's good for a check.
So, you, go ahead. You've got some, a few words to say, go ahead and then we can make the presentation.
Good morning, commissioners, how are y'all?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Davis?
How are you?
Good, good morning. So, we just want to come this morning and just give lots of praise to our fire and rescue and emergency managers for the county. We're going to be giving a donation of sixty-five thousand dollars. Fifteen thousand will be going to emergency management for new AEDs, I believe ten, which will go to new units and two, Jennifer said, will be used for training. And the remaining fifty thousand will go to Josh for fire and rescue, for supplies and whatever he needs. But some of our plans, and this is Stephen Cope, he's head of our health and safety for Delaware Basin and Permian Basin. And we've just really have enjoyed working with Josh and Chief Lopez here in Carlsbad and getting to know them, their needs. I mean, we can't operate without them. We need them to take care of us here in the community, we need them out in the patch. And so, their response is amazing, we can't thank them enough, we want to help them with resources, we help other industry, is supporting and help with resources. And before I pass it to Stephen, one more thing I'd like to announce is, we announced it at the mayor's oil and gas conference, but we are, Chevron and Simrex are starting, it's called the Delaware Basin Emergency Response Initiative. And so, what this is going to be is, we had an initial meeting, it's probably eight or nine of the industry that are working in the Delaware Basin to see what we can do to support the Texas side, because New Mexico and especially Eddy County, we can't thank you enough for covering the Texas side. I'm working with Culberson County to help with their capacity building and Reeves and Pecos, I know Josh is helping with that as well. And so, we're going to be coming together as industries so that we don't take the time of our fire and rescue, we can all, he can all talk to us at one time. And, you know, we want to do things like build capacity for Swiss Water Rescue and those type of things. But we've really enjoyed our relationship. And Stephen, if you want to say a little bit more about it?
Yeah, no, I just echo Beverly's comments, we wouldn't be able to do what we do in the oil field without your guys' help, support. Being involved here at the community level is very important to us. And so, the more that we can give back, the better, better is for us, community relations and for Carlsbad, Eddy County overall.
We very much appreciate it. I know that, see Ms. Jennifer's out in the wings there, she pop in. But I know that with Josh and the response, it's, we don't really, in those kinds of situations, the state line doesn't really mean anything, it's just something on a sheet of paper. If the needs there, the call comes out, you come from wherever you can, as quick as you can, to provide whatever support. And I know that the teams in South Eddy County as well as what's available on the Texas side, in an emergency, that's where they're at. So, we appreciate you and what the industry does. We're staunch supporters, advocates as best that we can, so we continue to want to build and strengthen the relationships that we have. So, thank you very much. So, do you want to make the presentation? Jennifer, if you want to pop in? Josh? Oh, this is the, okay, we'll take care of the paperwork. Thank you very much.
I mean, thank you.
What, I'll get the check? I got the paperwork.
Yes, the paperwork.
Yes, I have the paperwork. I didn't get the check.
One, two, three, one, two, three.
Thank you very much. We appreciate Chevron and all of our industry partners. They've been very generous to the Eddy County and we continue to want to reciprocate in any way that we can, so thank you again. All right, next item on the agenda is the IFB RFP bid awards, and we have four of those. Ms. Anisia.
Good morning, commissioners. The first one is IFB twenty-one fourteen for foam and additional supplies for fire and rescue. We opened the bids on October twentieth and the county did receive two responsive bids. After review and making sure that everything was responsive, staff is recommending award go to KC sales with the lowest overall bid out of the two. Would that will stand for any questions?
We have a motion to IFB twenty-one fourteen for foam and additional supplies, recommendation recommended the KC sales. I made a motion.
I second.
Beard?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Cordova?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
Next is IFB twenty-one fifteen Black River Village Road Award.
For IFB twenty-one fifteen, Black River Village Road, we solicited this on October eleventh and we opened these bids on October twenty-first. The county did receive three bids, all were deemed responsive, but the lowest overall responsive bid came from J&amp;H Services. Based on this, the staff is recommending award of IFB twenty-one fifteen B to J&amp;H with a total responsive bid of a hundred and twenty-six thousand, one hundred and fifty-three plus the GRT of seven thousand, five hundred, sixteen and fifty-seven cents. We will stand for any questions at this time?
Any questions?
No questions.
We have a motion for IFB twenty-one fifteen, Black River Village Road, award and recommendations to J&amp;H Services?
I'll move.
Second.
Beard?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Cordova?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Thank you, commissioners. Next is IFB twenty-one dash sixteen, Bronx Road Reconstruction Award Recommendation.
This IFB was also solicited on October eleventh and the bids were also opened on the twenty-first. We did receive three bids for this one as well. The lowest overall responsive bid was also from J&amp;H Services. After checking responsiveness, staff is recommending award go to J&amp;H for a total responsive bid of a hundred and nine thousand, four hundred and twenty-four with a GRT of six thousand, five hundred and nineteen and eighty-one cents. Will stand for any questions?
Questions? Do we have a motion, IFB twenty-one sixteen, Bronx Road Reconstruction Recommendation to J&amp;H Services? I'll move.
Second.
Beard?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Cordova?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, commissioners. And last is RFB RFP twenty-one dash oh-five, twenty-one zero-five, sorry, Facilities Master Plan Award Recommendation.
We solicited RFP twenty-one oh-five on September twenty-second and we did receive two responsive proposals. After evaluation, we are recommending award go to Hewitt Saulers for RFP twenty-one oh-five. We will stand for any questions at this time.
What projects are you considering with this?
Well, this will consist of kind of an overall evaluation of, I believe I had twenty-two different addresses and twenty-five buildings around the county. Similar to what Josh will be doing with his fire stations with another vendor, but a little more in depth as to the various building systems, the condition and ages that they are. Estimates will include, you know, immediate repairs and then long-term capital outlay type stuff. In addition, another phase of this will be interviewing building occupants where appropriate, making sure that the spaces are still, you know, working and functional for the business that's being conducted in those spaces. And so, it's a little bit more than just a condition assessment, we'll be going in and doing that. And then there is a phase three, which will, you know, consist of some public meetings and get some additional input from other stakeholders around the community.
Is the health office on that list, one of the buildings?
Each health office is, yes, ma'am. So, fairly, I mean, I have a list here, I'll share it with you after the meeting, but most of, or all of the buildings that facility, Eddy County facilities is in every day. In addition, we did include some that we still take care of pretty regularly, you know, the Otis Gym, the Otis Community Center, Fairground Community Center, Sheriff's Posse Center out there as well, the facility itself. Just to take a good look at those, it'll be a good snapshot in time, you know, it won't be a living document, but it'll be a good place. And this is going to be a process too, it's going to stretch out twelve, fifteen months possibly, so.
Okay.
So, it's a baseline assessment so that we can know what we need to do to keep the facilities on par with what they should be and, or make a decision to do something else with them if that's the appropriate action.
And may I add to that, we did something similar to this shortly after we brought in the work order system, facility dude, where they did, they just came in and did a, you know, a very quick and dirty facility assessment. What those do is, you know, they kind of quantify everything collectively and then allow us to plan the limited resources that we have, you know, which roof's more important than which roof or which just, you know, and plug those numbers in as we can go through the fiscal years. Currently, you know, I've picked all the low hanging fruit off of most of those, off of that initial assessment, so now's a good time, you know, to capture those good things that we did and then figure out how we're going to keep moving forward through the rest of these buildings as well, so.
More questions? Okay, we have a motion for RFP twenty-one oh-five, Facilities Master Plan Award Recommendation to Hewitt Saulers. I don't know if I pronounced that right or not.
I'll move.
Second.
Beard?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Cordova?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Ms. Anisia. I will move, next up, the trailing agenda, first item is to approve the commission meeting minutes for October nineteenth, twenty-twenty-one.
Motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second. Of course.
Beard?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Cordova?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Thank you, commissioners. The next item for approval is the Purchase Card Approval Report for September twenty-twenty-one.
Have a motion?
I make a motion.
Second.
Beard?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Cordova?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Thank you. The next item is, we've received some awards from the State Fire Marshal's Grant Council, so we'll work through those, starting first with Queen BFD, Josh?
So, we applied for numerous state fire grants, we were awarded this three hundred thousand dollars for the Queen Volunteer Fire Department. So, what we're going to utilize this money for is to take place of our excise money that was utilized to purchase the three thousand gallon tanker that's currently on order, so that'll put that money back in there.
We'll apply this portion to that and use the excise.
Because it costs us like twenty-nine or thirty-nine thousand dollars of our own money on top of this three hundred, so we're able to put that back for a different project on a different day.
Need a?
We do.
Motion for approval, State Fire Marshal Grant Council grant award to Queen Volunteer Fire Department?
I'll move.
Second.
Beard?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Cordova?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
And next is the Fire Marshal Grant Award to Loving BFD.
For Loving, we were awarded SCBA fill station, so it'll be eighty-nine thousand, twenty-nine dollars. And we'll also be taking this to the Loving Council just to notify them, get their approval.
Make a motion.
Second.
Beard?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Cordova?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Thank you. Next is the Fire Marshal Grant Council Award to Happy Valley Volunteer Fire Department.
For Happy Valley, we put in for a facility replacement for their station two, which is in the McNew subdivision. That building's just too small, getting super old, so we've located a facility up there that Cass and I are actively talking to some people about, so we're trying to get a better deal than we could. We were awarded four hundred thousand dollars to assist with that project.
So, is that, so we would build a new facility, would we keep the old facility that we have?
The old one, the way the deed is, is it goes back to them if we're not using it.
Goes back to?
To the owner of the property.
Okay.
Whoever donated the building and the land to us a lot of years ago, I don't remember the exact name. I do have the deed though.
Is it getting kind of outdated?
Yeah, it's, so it's super small, it's two bays, the newer trucks are getting taller, so the bays set low and that's what we're running into is, you can't fit the trucks back in the bays and that's a lot of the issues that we're running into around the counties, we're having to kind of build.
Literally.
So, moving forward, we're trying to build for the future so that way we don't have to replace a facility, put new trucks in it, so.
Isn't there already a new facility in Happy Valley next to the old?
Their main station in Happy Valley, yes, the one in McNew, their substation is the smaller, older, outdated one. So, that'll take care of, give them two good facilities, we'll be able to give main station money for both of them, which will enhance the amount that we get for state fire funds.
I make a motion?
Second.
Beard?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Cordova?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Thank you, commissioners. And the last State Fire Marshal Grant Council Award is for Eddy County Fire and Rescue.
So, the last one is a countywide grant that was awarded for stipends, is what this allows us to do is reimburse the volunteers in some way, shape or form, we're still working on that, and it was for an amount of twenty-five thousand dollars. So, it's a good stepping point to try to build us a program that we can reimburse our volunteers for the time that they're giving to show them our appreciation to them, so I think this will be a great grant to try some things and see what we can do with it.
This is great.
Is this going to be an ongoing grant? So?
No, this is a one-time award, I mean, we can put in every single year, there are some other grants that we can put in through for stipend and recruitment and retention and things like that that we're looking into now to supplement this.
Okay, so if we're going to institute that, is it going to be an ongoing program?
The policy's going to read, or the way it currently reads is, as long as money is available. So, if we come to a commission, y'all decide that we have a little bit extra that we can put towards this program, or we find other sources of funds and there's money in there, then the policy will go to that. If there's a year where we can't fund it, then it's, it's just, it kind of goes dead in the water and it'll sit there until we can refund the program.
This will give us an opportunity to kind of see what response we get because of that. I mean, it's, the stipends aren't going to be huge, they're going to be, hate to say, nominal, but they're more than what's happening now, right? I mean, it's. And I'm all for it, I just was wondering. I agree. Nine thousand is.
It's not very much.
Because it doesn't sound like very much money to cover what some of those people are doing on a daily basis to benefit our county. If we start taking on a recurring cost, then are we looking at a paid staff? Yeah. And so, we have to, we have to watch this carefully, we're working with finance and HR on how to navigate how those stipend awards are made and when they're made and what's required to denote participation to be eligible for the stipend, so. It's the participation of their personal vehicles and stuff like that, that I think it's a great idea to reimburse them, you know, I just was questioning whether twenty-five thousand.
Out of the hundred and forty-eight volunteers, if you took this and divided it out, it gives them a hundred and sixty-eight dollars, I believe.
Not very much money.
Yeah.
But it's, again. It's a start. It's a test, right? And if it's successful, then we can petition for more grants or we can look within the counties, that's something we want to take on within the county in future. But it's a great idea. I move that we can accept that.
Second.
Beard?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Cordova?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, commissioners, thank you, Josh. Next is a budget adjustment for Public Works Light Trucks, Mr. Burns.
This will be interesting. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Mr. Vice Chairman, I guess I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman today.
Acting Chairman.
Acting Chairman.
Priorities.
You only get drawn to oil cutting every now and then. What we're asking today is, we were granted budget during the budget process for two light trucks during this fiscal year, we usually get a few every year just to keep our fleet up. With supply being what it is this year due to global demands and issues, we do not feel that we're going to be able to procure two of our light trucks this year. So, what was presented is they would like to procure one mechanic's truck, which will be an F four fifty, five fifty, crew cab, and this will be one of our heavy mechanic trucks with a, essentially a mechanic's crane on the back of it, so that they can work on the heavy equipment out at the landfill, out on the road. They came in and presented that they're having some safety hazards, trying to lift some of that stuff with just manpower and backhoes, so this would allow them to safely move some of the heavier items that they need to move around. So, we would, we'd ask for the additional fifty thousand dollars and we'll procure one truck, which is readily available, ready to be fitted and procured.
So, we're moving, part of it's a line item and then we need some additional monies to finish it, but it would, it would be, I think it'd be a good addition for the fleet to have that capability. You see more and more of that taking on in-house, so. And it's in the lot, ready to go, the bed's available and the auto crane's available, so it's.
F four fifty for fifty K?
Five fifty. Yes, it's, the truck was running about, I want to say it's about seventy with the cabin chassis, and then the box and the cranes was the other additional amount, the crane alone was thirty thousand dollars.
Because we had, we had money for two trucks in the budget, we'll use that money plus another fifty to procure this truck and outfit it. So, we're.
Now, where he's buying these trucks.
This is being procured off of a state pricing agreement, so they were able to own this and they had it in the lot and they did some looking, but it is off our state pricing agreement.
Let me ask you something.
Yes, sir.
Do we currently have a mechanic's truck?
We have mechanic's trucks, but nothing of this size and nothing with cranes on it. We have.
So, we don't have a box that we could put on the new truck with, and then just add the crane?
The boxes come specifically for the trucks with this being a five fifty, we can't fit one of our three-quarter tons to this big two-ton truck and then be able to mount the crane on it with the structure and the, what it needs to be able to.
That we have are mounted on just a three-quarter ton?
They're all mounted on just three-quarter ton.
Like utility vehicles.
And this is a, this is a larger kind of a.
Yeah.
I'm not.
It's actually a catch truck.
Yeah, it's, it's. I've seen several of these outfitted oilfield services.
The reason I was asking is when we used to, we used to buy the trucks and just keep the beds and, you know, every once in a while we'd have to change the crane now.
And we do that, we don't have anything large enough to fit the crane, but that's exactly what we do with all of our other trucks, we try to keep them in three-quarter ton pickups, that's what we bought last year, and then as we rotate them out, that's what we fit with the beds that we have, and we only buy a couple beds every three or four years.
Yeah.
So, we do switch out and keep the beds and fit them with those.
Well, and I'm sure this is going to, you said manpower, you know, I'm sure they're lifting a lot of heavy stuff up there, we don't need anybody getting hurt doing that kind of work.
Yes, and really, we try to make do with what we got, we've used backhoes and a few things in before and we really try to strap it on, but this is more the right tool for the job type situation.
Yeah, using backhoes and stuff becomes a safety issue too.
Yes.
I saw one of those going down the road the other day and it was like, ooh, probably I set that down. Not us, somebody else, yeah. Anyway, but this is, we need an extra fifty thousand dollars to finish this out, so that's what the ask is.
Very good. Do we have a motion?
I have a motion.
Second.
Beard?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Cordova?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Thank you, commissioners. The next item is budget adjustment for the Sandpoint Landfill Office Building. Mr. Burns.
So, we just recently completed, I don't know, I've taken a few of you, if any of you haven't gone, we just recently completed a tipping station out at the landfill. It was a huge undertaking that I feel significantly improved our safety factors out at the landfill and our processes that we had, and we're slowly bringing that online right now to where we can move predominantly all of our weights and trash that we take out of the landfill down to our tipping station and improve our efficiencies and our safety just all the way around. This, we're, we were able to realize the savings in our initial budget for that project and we feel that a, to be able to have a more efficient and adequate operation, we're asking for, I guess it'd be a Conex portable office building to house our managers and our finance person that we have out there, and also to have a conference room so that we can have professional meetings with our engineers and anybody that needs to come out and do business at the landfill, and we're not shuffling back and forth between Derrick Road and the landfill. So, we were able to get prices on a newer portable building and this is for the purchase of the building, the setting and installation.
So, the, and he's cleared this with his financial advisor, it was pretty stern. So, this would be taking the balance of the tipping station project monies and applying it to the purchase of this.
Yes.
This portable office building to place out there.
We have the budget in a different line item, this is essentially moving it to the correct line item to be able to procure this and buy it.
And we're not adding to the budget, we're just moving line items around.
Yeah.
Good question.
We'd like to seek counsel from your financial advisor.
We are adding to the budget, we carried over the. We carried over the balance from last year. Essentially, we're adding, and, and the way it carried over, I, I think we are adding this out of new monies to a new line item.
We'll get this right now.
There we go.
Go ahead.
He had originally budgeted a million dollars for the tipping station last year. He used about three hundred thousand last year, so we should've carried over a little over six hundred thousand. But we only carried over less than three hundred because he was gonna finish with that, which he has. So, technically, it's still money within the environmental funds. We just didn't re-budget it this year, so it's already cash balance in that.
We're not taking the operating money and...
No, this will come out of the cash balance out of the environmental fund, which they already had last year. They just, it was unused money from last year.
So, it's nothing out of, that we would have to change from general fund. It would come from existing environmental cash balances to complete this work, so. Just...
Yes, will not come out.
Allocating it to a specific line item, a specific project.
Right.
She saved you, Josh. Call me Josh.
Let him check cash and see what he has.
I could just ate some candy. That's a pretty good compliment to Josh. I don't think so.
Yeah. I think we should look, if there are any additional questions on item number seven. Sandpoint landfill office building.
Do we have a motion?
I've got a question.
Yes, sir.
I just want clarification. So, the tipping station, is that that, I don't speak all this that great. Is that that huge building we went walk-through last year? So, because in that huge building, didn't we have offices and whatnot in there?
We did do a few offices in there. We moved a account tech out there to help them with their fiscal accounting that they do. So, we have two managers sharing an office, and they're also doubling the break room as a conference room. It's, it, it's not a good professional environment to show when we have people that need to come use it and have offices. It doesn't really also have the privacy when they need to have meetings.
And it's off-site, right, of the landfill?
Well, no, it would be right off. I don't know if you're familiar with out there. We put it inside the landfill, but it would be adjacent to that building.
So, that building is really a shop with a couple of offices in it. This would be more of a, this would be the... Yeah, the Sandpoint landfill administrative office. And the shop would be the shop, and if they need to use those offices for other purposes. But the, the, the accounting technician and the managers would use this office. There would be conference space available if they needed for other business out there. I mean, this, the landfill is a happening place. You know, this, the amount of traffic in and out of there is just kinda staggering. So, I think it would be an appropriate addition for the facilities out there.
But one more time, we're gonna move environmental funds to cover this, nothing from the general fund.
Correct.
More questions?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay.
Beer?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Cordova?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thanks, Jason, thanks, Ms. Roberta.
Josh. Josh. Wow.
You know, he left.
He got insulted, didn't he? Got mad?
All right. Resolution and agreement consent agenda.
Any questions? Anybody wanna pull anything out? And this is just part A of resolution R twenty-one one oh four and R twenty-one one oh five?
As well as agreements, A twenty-one one forty-eight and A twenty-one one forty-nine. Yep.
I make a motion that we accept them.
Second.
Beer?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Cordova?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners. The next item on the agenda is for elected officials and department head updates. Ms. Jennifer.
Hey, morning.
She can whoop you. No.
I invited him to sit with me out there, but he would... Guess he knew better. I don't have a whole lot, just wanted to give you an update on the clinics. They're still going every Monday now, no longer on Fridays, and we are doing nine to one out there at the Civic Center. They've been going really well. We had a hundred and sixty-two, the last one, yesterday. And they've been over a hundred every time that we've had them, close to three hundred at times, so. Lots of people coming out, lots of boosters and first shots, and so. And then, we are looking at the kids ages five to eleven. They are waiting on the protocol for that, so that should be right around the corner as well. And then, testing, I was notified that the college is now doing testing on a regular basis on Tuesday from ten to noon, and on Thursday from twelve to two. One of the things that has been brought up several times to me is the cost of the testing. They're looking, you're looking at anywhere from a hundred dollars to, I guess, one fifty, two hundred dollars. I've been told all three of those amounts, so. And I don't know exactly where they're going, or, you know, what they're doing. And then, there's been some, I had one call me yesterday that said something about CBS and Walgreens telling her about a voucher. So, I'll call today and find out more on that, but as of right now, I haven't heard anything on a voucher that is offered by the state, so. But the cost of the testing, when we were told that there would not be a cost, there's, there is some sort of cost involved in it.
And the, the colleges, the, where it's occurring out at the campus, they're attempting to collect that, or it's being billed through insurances, or...
The, the ones that have been, have called are the ones that have gone to Walgreens and CBS.
Oh, okay.
I haven't got anybody that was, that has gone either to the Civic Center for testing or to the college that has mentioned anything on a cost.
Because most of those are going through Curative, and Curative is managing that through the state. Our understanding, right?
Yes.
Yeah, so, so what you were referring to was for private businesses who are doing testing, that's the feedback you're receiving?
That is the feedback. I have not confirmed that with either of them, Walgreens or CBS, but those were the two that were mentioned yesterday, so.
We, we've been working, discussing with, with Department of Health, and probably a month ago, they sort of pulled their horns back at the regional level on what they were, how they were going to organize their staff and availability. Previously, there was a lot of emphasis on testing and vaccinations, and then the testing sort of faded away. We, we, the county and the city, and our partners have been the ones, and our, our local DOH representatives have been the ones to keep the focus on vaccinations and the process running. Testing has been more of a challenge, particularly with the requirements for things that are being mandated, right? Businesses, schools, it's, it's a real challenge, and it seems that from a state, maybe regional level, the Department of Health has sort of faded into the woodwork and not been as visible as we'd hoped they might be. We'll continue to work on that, but it's, it is a challenge, especially with the mandated testing requirements that are being put out there.
Other than that, I don't have anything else of questions, or...
Keep doing what you're doing.
Well, that day's probably gonna improve for kids today, or tomorrow.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I just wanted to give a quick update on our FEMA projects. We just awarded the final two of what should be the end of this whole deal. We're moving along very well, and we're hoping to be ahead of schedule. And Roberta's doing a very good job of keeping the state on point with closing these deals out and then keeping them organized. So, we are hoping to close these out ahead of schedule and finally be done with these. So, wanted to give you an update that those are moving along very well.
Potentially by year end.
Soon.
But we just wanted to get final sign-off from, from FEMA and, and DHSEM.
Sorry.
Like Jason said, we're moving along really good with the roads. I think the one thing that's probably gonna hold us up is some of the equipment that we bid out. If you remember, we did some equipment bids, and because of the shortage of that, until we get those and we actually pay for those, I think that may be the holdout until we can actually finalize paperwork and close everything out, depending on when we get those.
So, they will close out particular project workbooks, and we may have one or two outstanding until we get equipment?
Right, and luckily, that equipment is on a PW by itself, so we may just have that one PW hanging out there by itself to finalize, closing out the whole entire FEMA, forty-one fifty-two.
That won't work against us, that we're held up with, like, equipment or anything?
No, we, we've already, we've filed for extensions if we don't meet the deadlines that we had originally in place.
But getting the road portions has been a huge effort, and sometimes a struggle, sometimes a battle. But I think we're, we have our momentum, and we have the FEMA players and the state DHSEM players on the same page, moving in the same direction. So, we're hopeful to be finished by year end, if not early January of next year.
And we're currently sending all the documentation in as we're finishing roads up, so that way we're not sending them as a whole for a whole PW.
It'd be a huge achievement, it's a huge achievement. Have this out from under us. Thank you.
Since I'm up here, I'll give a quick update for finance. Come next week, finance will be back to fully staffed. We hired two of our open positions. We had a procurement specialist that we filled a couple weeks ago, and then our finance support tech we just filled. And then our accounts receivable, I mean, I'm sorry, our accounts payable specialist will be back next week, so. Come next week, finance will be back fully staffed. We're wrapping up our financial audit for the fiscal year ending twenty-twenty-one, so we should be getting draft financials sometime before Thanksgiving, and hopefully wrapping that up before Thanksgiving.
And at this point, we have not received any...
I can't say.
We've not received any feedback that would make us unhappy. We presented them with some feedback that, if, that were to occur, that someone could lose their arms and be beaten with them, but... We would, we would unchain our chief accountant, and they would not be happy.
The, the audit's going good.
It is, it is, and she's, Ms. Roberta's been, and her team have been very on top of it, answering questions, and I think it's gone well. I think there were a couple of questions raised earlier that we got resolved, and things are looking good, so. But you, you still warmed up. Okay. I'm scared of you. I might be so. Thank you, Ms. Roberta. Any other? Josh?
Now, don't insult him and call him Jason.
Jason, come on.
Don't call me this. Have to take a week off.
So, I just a couple of things. Last night, the Toka Group and Chris Cheveria, my, our division chief up in Artesia, were given a plaque. There was a lady up in Artesia that did a ruck thirteen miles to remember the fallen soldiers, and they escorted and provided EMS standby. Also, the sheriff's office helped with the escort, so I thought that was pretty cool that, that she recognized our people, so. We may look at recognizing her for what she did. I think it'd be a good thing to do. Our firefighter in Loving is doing good. He's on his home stretch of his EMT class. So far, he's passing everything, so it's looking good for that. He is still running calls during lunch break. He has done some of the special events, helped cover calls after hours. We have hose and pump testing going on right now. We're done with the north part of the county, we're working on the south. County fire tactics training will be Friday, Saturday, Sunday out at the office. It's a company out of Florida, they're coming in to teach our group. We are bringing in some people from other agencies to give them this training opportunity. The guys will get, guys and gals will get twenty-four hours of training this weekend. On the seventeenth, Frank Viscuso will be here. He wrote a book called Step Up and Lead. It is fire-related, but it's great for anybody in a leadership role, so I'll be sure to send that out across the county for anybody that wants to attend. He does one in Hobbs, one here, and one in Roswell, so we do that to try to keep our ranks strong across the southeast part of the state. They did fire prevention, assisted Artesia, we knocked out Loving, and it went really good pre-K through fifth grade in Loving, so. Aside from that, everything's looking good. The truck inspections are almost done, we have two districts left. We found issues with over twenty-seven of the trucks. Some of them were issues that were gonna make, have to come out of service. We were able to make some quick fixes and some adjustments to maintain those trucks in service, so. We should have a good list to come bring to y'all, and kinda with a plan of where we're gonna move going forward. We'll get the building assessments done, and then we'll put it all together and kinda have a baseline of where we're headed, and, and a vision for the next ten to fifteen years to get some things knocked out, so. I don't have anything else. Does anybody else have any questions or issues that anybody's heard?
Was this the first time that you did, like, the baseline inspection of the vehicles?
Yes, man, yeah. And we knew some of them were gonna be...
There were some interesting finds. I was maybe not surprised, but it, it suggested that the ability to maintain through individual volunteers at their stations and one, one individual at the, you know, county employee to try and say grace over it all was, was a challenge. I think this way, our fleet will be what it needs to be, and be able to respond when it needs to respond without any concern or, you know, risk. So, I think it's, I think, it's done what was intended to do, and it'll pay dividends for us in the future.
And it's important because we take these trucks and they sit, essentially just parked, not running. We go in, turn it on, and they're expected to perform at their highest level immediately, so. It was, like Mr. County Manager said, there were some good findings, some things that we really need to address, and some other minor things that were not that big of a deal, so.
Thanks, Josh. Any others? All right, let's move to legislative update. Mr. Fannings otherwise engaged, and I don't see any of our local legislators here. All right. Travel request consent agenda. Just have the one. Yep, we need a...
I'll make that motion to approve travel request consent agenda.
Beer?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yeah.
Cordova?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners. We don't have any emergency business. Legislators, elected officials, Chief Griffith is, he's got it under control. Thank you, thank you, sir. County manager comments. I mentioned a couple of things. A lot of good things going on in the county. Wes wasn't here, he's, he, he kinda keeps things low-profile, but the first phase of the southeast loop, we've signed off on substantiative completion. For that portion, they still have a bit of striping and some signage to do before opening that up to, to traffic. We have the electrical plumbing in place for the control intersection, so we'll need a meeting with NMDOT and the City of Carlsbad. NMDOT, I think, has, I'm not sure if they have the plumbing on the George Shoup side of that intersection to install the control, the, the... I'm not sure if they have the plumbing on the George Shute side of that intersection to install the control, the the traffic lights. But it won't be too long and.
As I was gonna ask you, how long is it before we try to get the lights out there? Because that's a real safety hazard at this point.
Agree. I I think, you know, talking with Jason, who's been talking with Francisco, the district engineer, I I think it's sooner rather than later. I don't think it's an extended. They have identified monies to do the intersection, so.
How many accidents have we already had out there?
I don't know the specific um at the on the Shute side accessing sixty-two one eighty. Um but when we open the south side, we we have the turn lanes and the acceleration, deceleration lanes on that side. There there is, if you're turning from coming off a chute and going east, there's an acceleration lane on that one. Um and there is a turn lane if you're coming west to turn on the chute.
I think it's the crossing.
I get, I agree, I agree. So I I think it's important and and I think DOT recognizes that as well, so. Uh I think sooner we're we're ready for it. Um I think the cost of signals is a couple hundred thousand dollars roughly.
Reason I get concerned is because I was going out to Hobbs and there was a truck that was gonna come across. And I don't think they saw, you know, with all the barriers up and stuff.
When when I used to drive that every day during the peak of the i- industry activity, um it got to be where trucks would just go, mass winds. And I'm coming, you need to find something else to do.
Yeah.
Or we're gonna have a tro- a problem and and that's um. Traffic is picking back up.
The lights, the better.
Absolutely right.
You know, because we're gonna have some real accidents if we don't, if we don't get, if we don't get that up quick, if we're gonna open that road, if we're gonna open that road, then we're going to have accidents until we get that stoplight. And I don't know if we don't have the proper markings on those stoplights as trucks coming out of our own.
Commissioner, we we just had a sixty percent design meeting uh last week with DOT on the traffic signals there. And that, so it's in sixty percent design. Um that's within the scope of our our grant, but DOT, in talking to Francisco, decided to go ahead and uh pay for the design through DOT, and so we didn't have to use any of the grant funding. Um it looks like we're probably gonna go to bid on that uh in the sp- in the early spring for the traffic signals.
You know, I think with something that we wanna watch, you know, to have those temporary lines that you can set up and remove at some point. If we're going, I mean, we need to watch. That's a real hazard.
So we'll we'll have signage about the, you know, turning and what, we could put beacons on them if we need to to.
Right.
So so that it gets people's attention.
And it's really not our problem. I mean, it's a it's a state.
DOT problem.
It's a DOT problem, but you know, it's gonna be our citizens that are at risk.
So we'll we'll work to accelerate if if we can, how we can, and I and I think Francisco's very attentive.
Yeah.
They they they're great partners, so I think.
And if we have the resources or the lights or, you know, whatever, we should use them. That's a good idea.
Right, we'll we'll see about maybe putting some messages messaging signs up um way before that intersection and then.
And kinda and kinda on the other side, you know, you come up over, you come down through where Becker and them used to be, and you come up over that hill and then you turn and then right there is where those trucks are gonna be turning, those people coming off of that hill running seventy, eighty miles an hour.
Yeah, there the lighting, just the the actual lighting of that intersection is gonna improve significantly also, so it should be well lit. Um and then we'll make sure that we have the pre-lighting warnings up and tell people we'll really get used to it.
Yeah.
But that's a that's a that's a significant milestone. Um Wes is getting ready to put phase two and phase three out to bid, which will oh extend that down towards thirty-one.
Has everybody been out to see that? That's really a nice.
Oh, yeah, yeah. There was some significant work there to get off the grade of sixty-two one eighty, down to the grade of US refinery, across that draw there, so. Yeah, good work there, a lot of good work there.
So one thing to think about too, and I I we've been looking at um maybe putting some policy or something in place, but just for you all to think about is in order to keep the flow on these relief routes, um and I know DOT and some of, there's some cities that have different regulations or policies per road that would require, for example, um maybe a a traffic count, like if a a truck stop's gonna go in place there, um maybe depending on what those traffic counts are, and DOT has a book that kinda um lets you know the different businesses, what types of traffic are gonna be accessing that that business. Right, and so maybe putting something in place for these relief routes that would require like XL, Dcel lanes or left-hand turn lanes if those businesses are gonna go in and they're gonna create a lot of turning motions and you know, to make it number one safer and number two, keep the flow mov- moving on those routes.
Yeah, I I don't know how it is now, but it used to be pretty hard to get a uh access point onto the highway itself.
Right.
I don't know, you know, you'll have to give the permit to do that.
But but the right now, the relief routes are county roads, so we could control that for now.
Yeah.
At some point in the future, that may change, but for now, we would have the, so we might consider what the county would like to see along those routes in terms of traffic management for for business purposes.
Yeah.
The other thing is, like I say, the bids on that, so that'll continue, that work will just continue on into the next fiscal year. The southwest relief route has been um grubbed and cleared, the whole route from the intersection on Happy Valley Road, just just north of where Lee Street, where the road turns into Lee Street. All the way down to the uh City of Carlsbad Industrial Park, so that right away has been cleared. We we are still working on some final details with BLM and the Hackberry Watershed District for um some elements in that right away. Um there will be multiple work fronts start up along that route. Working on intersections, working on crossings and different things, so that works ongoing. Uh and then I think probably in the spring, we'll see, starting to put base course down and and initially that road will be uh double pin chip, um but it's it's a reality now. The the working on getting the fencing up where fencing is required. And a lot of good interaction with the BLM. We've had some discussions with the Watershed District on some of their uh concerns and needs, so. We'll continue that effort. Today is November second, election day. Uh if you didn't take advantage of the early voting opportunity, which was quite quite large, um today's the day. And following up with that, um we have a special commission meeting a week from today to do the uh canvassing from the election, so um next Tuesday at eight thirty, just a reminder. The we had Chevron here at the beginning of our meeting. Oil and gas activity um has been steady, increasing slightly. Speculation that the next calendar year, at the beginning of the next calendar year, investment monies will um start moving back into or additional investment monies will will find their way back into the basin. Uh looking at the production coming from New Mexico OCD. Gas production is increasing significantly. Oil production is increasing as well. Well above our budget targets.
What's the WTI?
This morning, it was trading just under eighty-four, about, well, it was even eighty-three fifty, but it's the average for October will be in excess of eighty dollars.
What did we uh what did we budget for?
Um we we budgeted forty-five um for most of the year, if I remember correctly. I'll, we might have done fifty. Forty-five on. So forty-five forty-five dollars a barrel WTI on eleven million barrels a month, and we're we're exceeding that now.
Part of the production a month.
The what the state posted, Eddie County. Where I think the the uh September data was not quite sixteen million barrels, so. Um natural gas was, I forget how many. Yeah, this last one was up quite a bit. Natural gas was trading at five twenty-five. Um we 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 forecast that at. Two dollars and fifty cents. Gas production is way up. It it the markets, the pipelines that have been installed to get it to the Gulf Coast and then to the East Coast, so. Last month, for or for September data, um showing just about two point six BCF coming out of Eddie County. And well above our, well above our target, so from a revenue standpoint, from the oil and gas side, you might get your crystal ball back out and polish it up a little bit. We'll 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 exceed our bu- budget forecast significantly in that regard.
But we ought to be thirty-five, thirty-seven million.
If we be quite that high, but it won't be too far off, yeah, so. But um some of the things that that brings is putting those monies in reserve for other needs and contemplating what those might be.
Continue with our cro- road projects.
I think that I understand your your uh focus, Commissioner, and I think the county's done a very, very good job in that regard. I was looking at our expenses through uh September. And on whole, it looks similar to the first four months of the last fiscal year. But when I look at the differences, um we've spent more money on special projects and not as much money on road projects. That's a reflection of getting those bigger issues out of the way initially and now working on the 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 backside of that priority curve. And then getting to where um Jason's pavement quality index is where we want it and maintaining those roads, so.
That that's the difficult part, right? You the last, the latter part of what you just said, the maintaining of the roads. I mean, with the traffic and stuff that we're, it's starting to step up and stuff, it's harder to maintain what we've already done, you know? And we're trying to do new stuff along with maintaining the old stuff.
But if we get the roads in condi- in the right condition, it's easier to do than
Yes.
what we had done previously.
Definitely.
So I think we're in a good position.
Yeah, we were in a hole just trying to get to ground zero.
Yeah, I think we're we're getting close to being ground zero.
Yes.
So uh it may be a little bit better with some of the work that's been done. There's been a lot of great work done in that regard, so. Um we'll keep you posted on on that front. Um next next meeting where Ms. Roberta has the updates on the finances, so we'll bring those in. That's probably, that's probably enough for now, so. Um next meeting, we'll have a full agenda. So it'll be a, it'll be an interesting meeting. Any questions? Next item is the county commissioner comments.
Mr. Cordova?
Uh it's great to hear that we've budgeted so well and that we're looking good. Um it's good to hear about the road projects. I would like to, and I agree with you on keeping roads focused and uh maintaining. I feel like we've done a lot of work in the front to make it easier on the back as far as road projects go. I would like to see us continue to expand on special projects, specifically things like maintaining Main Street downtown, the facilities. I I visited the health office last week and it needs some love, definitely, for the staff that's over there. It needs to be uh updated, you know, quite significantly. But um I think it's important that we continue to look, you know, beyond, you know, roads and see what the other county needs are, facility needs are, so. Um again, great job budgeting with everything. I'm very happy to hear that we're doing so well, so good job.
I'll make mine super quick. Um just a reminder, the playoffs are starting and Artesia's in them. In case y'all were wondering, we're a four seed, so we don't play this week, but we'll play the winner of Mayfield and somebody, so that should be interesting. This is the first year Mayfield's kinda been in our group. Did Carlsbad make it? I truly don't know.
I think they're eleven seed or something.
Okay, so they should play this week, so so have a ballgame this week. Artesia won't, so uh get out, support the kids. I don't know the volleyball, where they're at, honestly, so. But good stuff coming. Uh oil and gas, the one thing I, you know, while Chevron was making the presentation, and I know we do a good job of of getting that out there. I wonder if it wouldn't be beneficial, 'cause I know the last time we were in Santa Fe, which has been a while, 'cause 'cause we're not allowed there inside right now. But last time we were allowed in, McCretchen and I sat through one of the committees a- and a lot of the room was very negative to oil and gas, saying, oh, well, they they take from the schools, they do this, all this nonsense that we constantly hear from 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 some of the the players up there. It would be nice for us to have a number that we could say, yeah, but they donated X. Because that number never really gets factored in anywhere. You know, we can show the arrowhead where how much money is generated to to schools and how much money is generated to infrastructure. It would be nice if we could somehow pull together from Eddie County what they've given Artesia to our uh schools, Carlsbad schools, STEM programs, the fire services, the sheriffs, all the other stuff that they don't really get credit for up there. To where when they start saying that nonsense again, when we we stand up, we have a ready number that says, yeah, but did you know not only do they fund this, but they also donated X dollars, and that's just in Eddie County. I think that would be helpful for some of those folks to hear, 'cause all you hear is how ravage, how they ravage our land and and, you know, they're trying to kill us all and all the nonsense. Uh it'd be nice to say, yeah, but here's where they contribute back and actually try to improve our communities. Make them safer, make them cleaner, make them, all the things they do that they don't get credit for, because uh that would make them look good, and that's obviously not something that's popular anywhere right now. So just a thought that I had while they were giving that presentation, kinda to go off of what Commissioner Cordova was saying, one thing I wrote down. Uh if we do, I I know I'm very excited to see what what your study's gonna show, what your building's doing. Because I think we've got some major issues that are fixing to come up that we all know. I think the courthouse has gotta be on the front of our minds of problems. You know, the jail, I know it's just perfect and there's no problems over there, but we might discover some. So I do think that we're gonna really need to start, roads a hundred percent, I'm never gonna waver on that, and 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 I don't think any of us will. I mean, obviously, that's something majorly important, but I also think I think that is gonna show us some major problems that we're gonna have to start addressing and quick kicking down the road, because then we're gonna get in the same situation we were with the roads. If we continue to neglect, we're gonna have to start uh making sure that we we fill both sides and and keep keep Eddie County buildings, roads and everything else at the front of our minds, so. Looking forward to that, but I do think we're gonna have to really start focusing on, I know Brian probably disagrees, we don't need any money, I understand that, but we might need to give you some anyways, just just in case, so. but we might need to give you some anyways, just, just in case, so. That's all I have.
Uh, I knew that, that our economy and our budget was in really good shape when I left El Paso yesterday morning and paid four dollars and fourteen cents a gallon for gas. Well, I just had a thought that probably we're in pretty good shape on that. Uh, yeah, and, and you know, I agree, we need to, to work on our other infrastructure, but we also need to keep in mind that our number one strategic, strategic goal for the county is our roads and that's, you know, that's kinda where I'm, I'm at. I, I wanna do, but I don't wanna do it, anything that takes money from our roads if we need to repair roads. Uh, so I think that's good. I do, and I'm glad that both the Eddie County and Carlsbad are in the playoffs, that's a good thing.
I'd like to consider us Eddie County's representatives.
Yeah.
Great, that's good.
So, but that's pretty much, I think everything's going good. Uh, I'm happy with everything that we've accomplished and keep, keep going.
I'd like to build a little bit on what everybody said, I, uh, I agree roads are number one, but we have some major projects looking at us, the jail and the courthouse, and I'd like to see some of this, some money encumbered in some kinda savings account towards those, so maybe we can get some of this done without having to do a bond issue or some of that nature that's really gonna piss everybody in the down call. With that, I'm good.
Just, I apologize, one, one update, um, Ryan and I are meeting with the district attorney's office this afternoon to go over some, um, recommendations that would allow for some remodel if the commission approves to put a third courtroom in that facility. Um, we think we can do it, uh, we'll come back to you with a, with a budget estimate. We think we may be able to leverage some of the ARP monies that we've received to, to assist with some of that. Um, but, um, this will allow for the fourth judge to become, to, to be appointed, which the chief judge of the district has asked for. Um, so, we'll come back to you when we're, we're, we're fir- more firm on the recommendation for that. But that will just kick that can down the road a little bit is all, so, to your earlier points.
Have we had architects looking to see what kinda remodel construction will hold?
Yes. We, we think we have a good recommendation, um, that will, uh, take into account the existing bones and infrastructure, um, do some shifting of tenants and allow for that to take place. It'll still be Eddie County.
I haven't been in there in a long time.
Oh, God.
I'm not in trouble, so I don't have to over there.
But I, it, it, it will functionally accommodate them for that purpose. How long, we'll see, but the, the, the interior structure and, you know, the electrical, the, the plumbing, you know, it.
It'll take now.
It's an old building?
It's an old building, it is a very old building, so. Um, but we'll, we'll, we'll come back to you with a firm recommendation on that. We'll meet with the DA's office this afternoon and then we'll meet with the judges, get their buy-in and then we'll come back and say, here's what we're recommending, here's what it'll cost, here's how we can pay for it, so, anyway. Um, we have no executive session today, so that leaves just item number seventeen adjournment.
We have a motion.
So move.
Take it.
Beard?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
Cordova?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
Thank you Commissioners.